January twenty third, twenty twenty four at four o'clock. And um, I want to welcome, got one person out there to welcome. How you doing? Thanks for being here and anybody that's watching on Zoom, we appreciate you uh being part. And we'll start right off with new business. Number one is accomplishments, accomplishments during the twenty twenty three. Mr. Theron.
Pass out some documents here just to show you guys. You know, uh, since we got three of you who are, who are a year in and uh it's been a bit here a while, but I had to show you guys. You know, with good planning, which is what we're trying to do today, uh once you can't college. Yeah, so. So this is kind of the best of things that uh that's been done in the past few years. And uh last year's in here, I've done this for several years to draw all the board members. And uh we usually try to do it first of the year, and it kind of leads us to be able to talk about uh what uh you know, what we're going to do this year. Because as we said earlier, really key is to plan ahead, see what you want to do, make sure everybody's going to say she was using. And uh it kind of goes there. So uh we pass it down the house. So anyway, uh as I say, I've listed, cast out a ton of accomplishments from back. These were direct from what we did from seventeen eighteen and all the way up through uh previous years. And then uh you see here is kind of a list of uh foundation accomplishments that uh I put together when I was looking to retire and this is kind of something that you can go into which years. And uh there's a lot of things in there, a lot of good things have happened and uh you know, um good planning and good things happened this year as well. Just to kind of go over last year, some of the things that we came in, twenty twenty three. You know, this, you know, the purchase you can have a chassis from uh public works uh two twenty twenty three in the big uh was left and we did receive an extra five hundred and twenty five thousand dollars from G dot. We initially had had asked for those dollars for Cobble Creek Circle. The Cobble Creek Circle was a two billion dollar project, so we didn't want to put that five foot five worth of Cobble Creek Circle because we we couldn't, we didn't have the extra dollars. What we did is we asked them to allow this to go back to our, he did first, and we used it on Blue Stool, that's what we did. Now, we do plan on that bridge stuff, we do plan on asking G dot to help us with that. The road fair event that I thought it would uh, it may not have to totally pull that renovation, but there are auction areas we we should go get working with that. We increased the Lake Bearweather RV site camping uh dollars from twenty dollars to thirty, still a good deal, still a lot used down there. Uh we had the invoice for twenty four month warranty repairs to courthouse room. We purchased a Ranger tire changing machine, which Bobcats do turn boards. Uh we looked into and had actually a referendum set for county wine liquor sales. We uh approved internet service from Lake Bearweather, we met some cloud permit software. Just pressure washing the courthouse wall and sidewalk. Uh normally engineers and the buyer middle uh was chosen to be building inspector, play on the view. We threw the J L River P and completed that project. We placed a cover of the river code, a table tree, uh click, no, excuse me, river code at table road. And I think it basically would be table creep. But anyway, we placed uh Duke Swaddle Color uh through about two thousand dollars to build the you know, storage shed at Lake Bearweather, using recreation budget. We did the comprehensive plan, I think last week you guys signed off with that. We had the uh land bank that was close to the twenty fourth. You were awarded, this has been a long term project we've been working on, we can get a warrant, the payments contracts, we have evidence. And we purchased a nice office machine, public works, we got some other stuff, business works has happened this year. And again, go back, take a look at your uh at if you college, which is a lot of the past years. We've had a lot of work, all that takes uh working together, uh pulling the same record. Uh we cleared claims to be able to uh talk with all of you. So I will uh you guys with that, answering any questions you have.
I just have a couple of comments on the Bueller Evans, that was like a two year project before uh this current board came to be in existence. All we did was pass that, so that's something that was in the works prior and you know, with all the meetings I hear, how much we've accomplished, accomplished, accomplished. To see this uh list is really nothing compared to the prior years before that. So thank you for composing.
Like I said, this is something we do every year uh where we want to have an idea, have such a supper. What we want to do is uh for the upcoming year and we are sure, let's see what's asking you other questions. Uh you know, please read through that, let me know the questions, somebody has some questions for some of the projects. And uh and with that, I guess flew to work on with John or others. Uh putting together a list of projects that we need to accomplish, which you guys have already looked at. Uh transportation, we already looked at uh personnel and uh your kitchen, and I think you've got some good direction on that. And today we want to look at and discuss with you guys some of the projects we need to do other bands presentation. This would be buildings, some plans and some other work we need to do. Uh updates to maybe some of our patents or whatever. And uh anyway, so we want to just kind of keep that off, we need to get clear direction for the board and what we want to uh invest in. I think John may have some figures on what we have available and uh and then we can uh take a look at that, we get clear direction for what you guys wanted to do and then we can move forward with uh plans and actions what we do, but so yeah. Turn it over. If you guys will buy up your laws, it's not your job.
Well, yeah, that's what we're here for today. I love, I love the work session with that room.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you and good afternoon commissioners. Uh like they said, we're here today just to provide some information to you and see what direction you got for us to take for our capital projects that are outside of transportation. First thing we want to talk about really is the funding, which is where the money comes from, because that knowing where that is and where that comes from is where it can go, really helps some of the other things fall in place. The the first category funds and the broadest funds are our general funds. It's the money that has come in uh from various and ones and has landed in our general fund. That can basically be spent on almost anything. Um personnel, supplies, equipment, construction, because that is the broadest category and has the most issues. We tend to try to use that one last. You typically want to go the most restrictive program first because that's the only thing that can be spent on. Um after the general funds are our SLOSS funds and that of course is our one percent um sales tax that can be spent on special purpose items. Uh it's restricted to the referendum that was approved by the voters. It's a semi-restricted fund, it can be spent on almost anything capital, but it cannot be spent on. Um it's for capital projects and capital equipment as well.
Um T, what a caveat with that if uh this rare indications, we always have more to spend than what we have left to spend. But if you get to a point where you've accomplished all of the goals, the things you wanted on the uh the list that you put in the referendum, if there's excess dollars there, you can take those back into the general fund. But again, that rarely happens because you know, you just roads are endless. But that is something.
Yeah, absolutely. And then of course, uh one, one of our more restricted funds is T SLOSS. That again is the one percent tax, but it can always be spent on transportation. Now, materials, supplies or equipment in that case, but it's strictly transportation.
And that's the one we're going to be needing to focus on and have it on the November ballot this year.
That's right. We like to give the debate, we moved to debate, that's what y'all expect to gentlemen, we moved to debate. And with everything we have to do for the criteria, we just don't have time to get it done. We have a debate. Not only impacts us at all on the move of the elections, the reason we don't is we got to go back and we pulled off the documents to make sure. But uh we have to go back and we have to have a little group of all the cities and distribution of those dollars. And that has to be done like ninety days, at least about sixty days, about. So uh so we'll talk about that at your next meeting, but uh but that's going to need to be kicked to uh November, if there's not a November time, we've made then to get that done and uh it it would just put it on the ballot and everything else, but just.
And the last time we did this, the town hall meetings were a big player in what we did to be able to get out and have them in every district to um get out to the community. So I do think that it needs to be November so we can have those town hall meetings in every district again.
And we've got uh just we focus on the meetings here in the next few months.
Yeah, and we really can't, it's going to be up to him to do it. Uh and I mean, we can.
We don't do it as our person, like our district.
We have it in our district, but we really can't do the presentations and the things like that, it's considered outside of where we should be. Uh but that's why Theron comes in and he's really good at that or uh John will probably be involved in it too and we'll get it out to those people. But we really can't push personally.
You can't spend tax dollars and voting here.
Right.
And you can't go out and say, well, what we do, I've done this ever and uh you go out and you show people what you've done and what you plan to do. So see, we'll need something, we'll need to talk about what we've done and we'll need to talk about what we plan to do uh for. And if you present it to them, uh they they'll understand, hey, they see one, they'll they'll understand it. So and on top of that, we we need to do a intergovernmental agreement with the cities and I, this is, this is the document, right? I need to go back through, change this document, update it from five years ago. Uh I probably use the new uh uh citizens numbers to be able to formulate the distribution percentages to the cities. And uh I'll, this is what I'm using as a draft, we wrote this last time, put this back together and get it to you guys. And I think it would be important as we start to win some of the cities and then we formulate and get everything going, because we start doing the presentations. So then we'll be inside the city and it's good to see and having cities tell us, hey, look, citizens here, this is what we're going to do as well. So that way, you know, we can engage the citizens in the city as well.
And our last intergovernmental agreement with the cities, when we had them in house to discuss it on one of the lost, I can't remember if it was T SLOSS or SLOSS. But it became a little challenging with some of the cities who were wanting more. So it does become a little bit of a challenge to get it where it needs to be.
That is the local option, so it rolls back.
So to make sure I understand, as a commissioner or as for them to, if I wanted to have a town hall meeting in my district just to talk about things that that T SLOSS helps us with and you know, you see these roads getting taken care of and so forth. And we wouldn't be able to do it, you know, when you just have a quick little town hall meeting, I can do that.
Yeah, as long as you know, just just, yeah, you could do that.
Yeah.
And and uh what I always ask them and tell them is this, I said.
Ask question and answer T SLOSS town hall.
Yeah, yes, yeah, right. And what I always tell them is this, I'm not telling you which way to vote, I'm just showing you the information. But I encourage you to get out and vote.
Right.
And so uh that's the best way to do it. Uh it's been successful through a lot of things. So anyway.
As I, attorneys had advised last time that we have to be very careful in what we say and do during those presentations.
That's fine.
A staff of volunteers at times, but we still are uh we still are not presenting a Can you mute everybody?
Okay, um and following the T SLOSS, the most restrictive funds, which of course are brands, because they are tied to a specific project, specifically, specifically uh funding, specific funders. Um also, that goes along with grants are low interest loans. Now, I know the interest rate is too high for most folks and most municipalities and governments to be thinking about loans. But because of um our area and population, we would get some subprime discounts on low interest loans. If that was something we wanted to pursue. But for this conversation, we're mainly going to be talking about general fund, SLOSS and then any grant funds that that we do allow them here.
Let me, let me, I need to make some, let me back up with 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 the T SLOSS, okay? You do a T SLOSS or SLOSS, you can do advanced funding if you want to. Now, you could put it in the referendum and say, you know, here's what we're going to do. Now, my recommendation then is that you have a big project, let's just say we're going to build a new, I don't know, a car collection. You needed all the money in year one or two. And I think it's worthwhile to go out with that ref, you know, with that as a as an option. Because it lets you borrow that money upfront to get that project done. You get all the project done, you don't have to string it out. But with transportation, uh you know, we want to try to spread it over some years because you get a big money to go with it, other money to go with it, and unless we're going to take a major road, build a major road or something. You're not going to spend it all in one year, it's going to take you both years. So there's really no benefit to borrowing that money upfront. And the the opposite side, though, if you don't have to say bond terms and all for that and what, so you get to keep all the dollars you can get from here. And so I would not recommend that that's funded, but it is available, T SLOSS is available, it's SLOSS as well.
But those special projects under such as SLOSS, not for the T SLOSS, you could do those capital projects, right?
Right.
So if we set, say, for instance, if the courthouse needed a big chunk of money and we set a million dollars at the beginning for SLOSS funds, explain how that works.
Okay, you got a couple of options in that, since it, you know, I was, I was using courthouse as an example. The courthouse is such that it is a structure that serves everybody, okay? So you can list it as a, I thought you were talking about like a tier one project, okay? Category one tier one project. You can take that off the top of the SLOSS before you uh share it with others. That way all the cities participate as well. That's one option. Uh the other option is of course if county, if it were a different program, for example, it's the same, we'll build something that's just for county like the Admiral Building. You you would have to put that in, you could advance fund it, but you couldn't really ask for the cities to participate as well. So you do have the ability, if you have a big project like on a courthouse, you can have that to come off the top of the proceeds. And then it could be used uh, you know, with everybody participating.
It does extend the time and period of uh.
Yes, you you it goes, SLOSS normally is a five year SLOSS, just like T SLOSS did. But if you have one, some of those uh category projects like that, you can extend it to a six year, which is normal, what we've always tried to do.
Only, only one more year?
Of uh got one more year of T SLOSS. Oh, yeah, you know, six is the max number of years. It all, they all have sunset, you just have to bring them back.
Like something that would be beneficial on the counter, we have water, county wine, wine soon, that would be too large for a six year.
Yes, so it would, uh it would. Now, with that, you might be able to get some of the uh low uh really young interest rate loans, other stuff like that, that you might could could work in. Um and use some of your rates and break structure, structure that we're paying for. Generally, that that one service system goes into an enterprise fund, that at the end of the day pays for itself. Because that way the taxpayers who are not benefiting from it don't have to contribute to itself. But that's uh kind of the way that that process works.
Alright, so the first uh type of projects that we're going to look at today are going to be the facility projects. You know, we've got a number of facilities around the county that are due for upgrades, repairs and really just catching up on regular maintenance. Um the the four or five items around facilities that we're going to talk about today are the courthouse, the county jail. Then we're going to talk about office space allocation because as as a staff, we keep growing. Then we're going to talk about the taxes, tax commissioner, tax assessor, planning and zoning building, and then Lake Maryweather. Those are the five or six facilities that we're focusing on right now.
But we also need to add that list of elections to it.
Okay, sure. Um so the courthouse, uh we are aware that the third floor is has mold issues and needs to be remediation and repairs. The courthouse also needs a new HVAC system. Uh about twelve years ago, they installed a brand new system with all the the splits or so. And it promised cost savings and it promised automation and it promised a lot of things and it just hadn't delivered uh between lack of maintenance and 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 lack of personnel and all that, it's just, it's really falling apart. The estimated cost for the new HVAC for the courthouse is about six hundred thousand dollars.
How long ago did you say this was done?
The split system, ten, twelve, fifteen years ago.
Closer to twenty.
Twenty? Okay, then, yeah, okay, then my apologies. Yes, okay, yeah, fifteen, eighteen, something like that. Mm-hmm, yes, sir. Um the estimates that we've gotten, we've gotten one bid on the work and it's roughly two hundred thousand dollars per floor. Um and we haven't RFP'd it, we just got one quote from from a vendor, just so we would kind of know ballpark where we were. Um the remediation amounts for the third floor, we do have some quotes in on it. It's going to be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to remediate the mold and then repair the damage on the third floor. Um now that.
These quotes we've gotten so far, is it advertised in the paper?
Uh no, sir, we just caught, yes, sir, we just.
They're just for the purpose of estimating costs.
Question whether we did it right, I was just wondering.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Who all could have seen it.
Right, no. No, and. Mm-hmm, right, so yes, or no, sir, we just wanted to uh ballpark them out. Now, of course, the two that bid on it will probably go in with the RFP and and put it in there. Um but we just like, Theron was saying, we just needed a a thumbnail price to to bring back to you guys. Now, of course, we don't know about the basement, the first floor or the second floor. We don't know if it's needs the mold and remediation or what repairs it's going to need. So I think that for the um.
But the HVAC's estimate was for everything in the courthouse, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Let me, let me say this, if you don't, you you could mediate it. But if you don't address the HVAC AC, you'll be mediating.
Right, mm-hmm.
You got to do that part.
Now, the good part about it though is is we have taken interim steps to to get ahead of the problems that we're going to have to fix. You know, y'all approved fixing the roof and caulking that, so the water in infiltration is, we haven't heard anything about it, so we assume that it is taken care of. Um adding the extra roofing to the annex of the courthouse also stopped the leaks over there. So hopefully we've stopped the water coming in. So now it's going to be going back and HVAC remediation and then the repairs. And then whatever other surprises we find.
We had leaks, something shared a show.
I think someone would have called. Yes, sir, I did. I I agree with you, I think so too.
Are people working currently on the third floor?
No, sir. That is actually why the DA is over here, uh because it's, they just, they didn't feel comfortable and and we didn't either.
So is there someone there that can say whether or not it was leaking or have we inspected during those rains?
We we checked back, not staff down there. It also lived the area where it was leaking, I put over the file, we showed it to where we had. I called you guys, we got the bird seat, you've overlaid that, uh that is not really the biggest prospect. We had, this week will be another good test.
Mm-hmm, right.
They started them all, ended them all.
Yep, so ballpark price for a courthouse renovation, million dollars, maybe a million two. Uh depending on what other work needs to be done in there. Um the next facility uh is the county jail, and of course, we've already started those improvements as well. Uh roofing and HVAC have been updated and so far, we have spent about three hundred thousand with the jail. Um there's a little bit that is still remaining on the HVAC, but we're, we're, we're going, working through that. We do have the bids that have been received on the jail door and locks project and we're waiting on the plumbing bids. So once we get to jail doors and locks and then the plumbing in place, that is going to really help with the um the environment and the safety inside the jail.
But plumbing bids, we're waiting on them to come in or we're waiting to even send it out?
No, we we have sent that out once already, we didn't get any response.
Right.
So what we're doing, we didn't get.
I'm not aware it went out because uh they had a company in P three city, I had, I poured an email from him. He gets sent to me, I poured it to the county.
Yeah.
They're, they're bidding on the handling that. And they said they'd like to take a look at it, so.
Well, here, here's what we're going to do to that. We we sent the bids out, no one showed up, I was there, you know, there. When no one showed up in pre-bid, we had to give. So what we're going to do with that is uh we brought that back and mentioned that to you guys and we just said, hey, that's no award. What we're going to do at this point, and we're about ready to start that. We will bring plumbers in and we're going to let them walk through and give us an estimate. We brought in two or three, let them look at it, we already got some looking at it and we will everybody see the same thing. So we've already gone down that road, but we didn't get any of those proposals, but we will get those and we'll be bringing them back.
When would we plan on bringing them in?
Uh I would say sometimes uh uh in February and uh.
I like to know when we're going to do that, just so I can get a couple of.
Well, you guys have any, anybody that you know uh that can do it?
I don't know personally, I just know what, I've seen their name and done them for thirty eight years in P three city, but I don't, I'm not tied to them.
If y'all will send us their names, anybody that you know that's into plumbing business, we will include that more bids. Get to the more bids and get the better off of it. The uh locks and doors are here and uh we got the bids on that, it's a little over four hundred thousand dollars. Uh building's gone back to us, of course, what I talked about, everything seems to be fine. There was one issue that we wanted to be sure with the sheriff's office. Uh because it had to do with a proprietary panel that's on the, on the doors that was valued at walking for local locations. Sheriff's office told us that's not really important for them. And uh so with with that, uh you're fine. When we bring it down, it'll build your next agenda for you guys to consider. That'll be the jail with lock portion of it. And uh.
Now, do all of the locks need to be placed in there?
Uh we're not doing anything in that, in that, but annex is just a rest. Rest of it needs to be fixed where they're compatible. Those things have been changed out through the years, you have some, some of that, then you have some. Sools are about like both, it's just, and and all of them will go to a situation where they can automatically open the doors from the tower in the event of a fire or anything like that. Plus they also automatically lock them down too if there's a situation there. So yeah, all of them need to be, most of the doors uh are going to have to be reworked, they're rusted. But of course, if there's some that that don't have to be, we're not going to spend money, but uh it's a lot of work.
Ex go back there, but you're talking about abandoning front, that's going to rush slap out, you can't, you can't open it.
We went up and uh our maintenance folks are up today fixing the hole in the shower floor, it's rusting all the way through. And they're going to have to weld plate over it. So, you know, our hope is to get the southern done, everything squared away with the main building. And then uh that annex building, you know, at some point in the future, you guys will need to just maybe make plans to uh abolish that or have it abolished, maybe some steel out of it, it's just really not suitable to, you know, invest more money. And it was just, just old and I think it was huge when we got, so anyway.
All because it was just pad.
Um so estimated repair cost for the jail, we tossed our numbers around earlier, about one point two. Or talked about them before, it's about a million, one point two for the jail.
We had all those.
Just blow locks and plumbing. Yeah, that was, that was everything. That was.
Everything.
We got a proposal we got back in March last year.
No, I just, so he mentioned something about still needing some AC.
And that's not by them. That's by them, so. And they had some uh, some of the uh piece of equipment with damages when putting in the radiator type of thing of H B C, we just had to put it on. We had a small leak there where the electricians he needed uh, actually we cut the, somebody covered it up with the last roof out there. So we had to do that, so there's a couple of little repairs, but I'm doing it now, cleaning the roof and electrician, we will, that's right. Those just by them, those are done. The big things are going to be the locking doors and the plumbing. And we looked at uh we looked at the drainage system, the uh the sewer system. And uh it's a ductal arc system. And uh it has like, you know, scour, whatever, it gets rough, don't, don't tap, that's what ductal arc does. We looked at the possibility of having a sleeve put through that, that they have, you know, descale and put in. This is this part, there's two other type of part that was.
Do the sleeves?
Do the sleeves. It's uh, so what we're going to do, look, is descale it and uh I think that building is something we're going to use for the other fifty years. They don't like to say put sleeves in, but I would see that kind of history of life cycle, so I don't think it produces.
And that, that is included in this woman estimate, one point two, all that, that's all in there?
It includes uh, we did uh, you know, pleaded out.
Yes, okay. So total around one, number two, is that including the roof, HVAC, the plumbing, the locks? So total around one number two, is that including the roof, HVAC, the plumbing, the locks?
Mm hmm. Yes, sir.
Roof's all.
Oh, roof's done. Yeah.
Roof's done.
That one's.
The whole point two is not including the roof, but that's old.
Yeah, one point two originally in that.
Originally included.
Mm hmm.
Oh.
We done the roof down, so maybe you're getting nine, a thousand, some of that.
Yeah.
But, yeah. Hopefully they'll come in over there. Do go work the, the lock project. There will be four hundred plus thousand dollars to change.
We got two buildings now at one point two. Let's try to bring it down.
Mm hmm.
Well, so actually the next topic is, is office space allocation, uh, with the DA being over here and some of our staff growing. We are, at least in administration, we're starting to outgrow this building. Um, so we have several options as far as, as staffing. And, and this is just for consideration and for anybody on a staff or anywhere that's listening, this, once again, is just for consideration. But option one that we would like to ask for consideration is the board of commissioner staff goes to the DFAX building. Sheriff's office and jail admin comes down here to the admin building. Tax assessor, tax commissioner, planning and zoning go up to the DFAX building while we repair the tax assessors and commissioners building that's on the square because it has a, a, a good amount of damage to it. It's a lot of water damage.
Reviewed it.
Right. Yes. Yeah. Y'all talked about that first part of last year.
DLC staff.
Mm hmm.
Tax tags, owning.
Mm hmm. Yes, sir. And assessor to the DFAX building. And then once we get the.
That's the person.
Yes, sir.
So if there's room for them to be there temporarily, why would they be in those rooms in this state?
Because we felt that the DA would be better up directly across the street from the courthouse. I mean, they could stay.
Well, my understanding is that we repaired the courthouse. DA goes back to his third floor place.
That, that's what we need. We need to look at that third floor pair sentence. Put the DA's off, back up there. And, uh, depending on what you guys do with elections, uh, we actually have a building downtown that we could go into the tax building. I'm sorry, we didn't.
No, yeah, sure.
We could go into, let's just say we, we worked the election. I'm just saying, whatever. Worked the elections, we found it in place. Vacants of building that we own down town. You could take one of the offices and you could move one of them, tax assessors, tax commissioner and some and whatever. And then you could make repairs to their section of the building while they're back. And then you could just move through and you could, you know, could make the repairs. Uh, and then at the end of the day, you could move it back, uh, all of them back into that building and the DA back into the courthouse. And then honestly, that, that building right there in the square would be an ideal building for IDA. Cause they would be right there where everybody.
They say all the do or?
No, I'm talking about where Patty's office is.
Yeah.
And there would be any room for this. It would be right there on the square. People could see it coming through. Uh, you know, it'd be right across from the courthouse. So that would be another good option, but those are the things we need to, you know, to.
And often, often the building zone does need to come out of that metal. So it's a major to have to go in.
It is to the end.
And then the tax assessor and the tax commissioner could just take over the slips.
Right. And, and that would probably be, probably built as well.
Uh, but I got a thought.
Got it.
You know, and then jumping up, telling the pros and cons of why I wouldn't, uh, in my line of work. I was thinking last night, I said, what if we agreed to have an appraisal done on that tax assessor bill? What it's worth? It's prime real estate, it's downtown. Yes. If we have a building, I think, you know, we've talked about so many buildings up here, uh, depending on what that appraisal comes out to be. If we could relocate, like you said, one in the elections, we got a building over here, we moved it, we still move all of them to a building where they can come in and go to tax assessor's office and the tag office and so forth. And depending what that building would bring sitting there to an investor, all that money could be used to fix the other offices up and let it become, uh, you know, capitalized, uh, real estate where someone can turn it into businesses, office rental, so forth. And depending on what it's worth, if it's worth a few million dollars or a million dollars or, or more, I don't, I don't know what's.
Yeah, and we, we talked about that as a potential option because, uh, it's probably, because the building is going to be expensive.
Like, that's what I'm saying.
Has a lot of potential obstacles that are. Yeah. Another option with that is if we overs, uh, halfway, we do own two buildings of them. And, uh, it could be a situation where, uh, where we, uh, used one of those. Uh, cause, uh, we talked about sheriff's offices there with town. I don't think they really want to be over there. But that building to the left side of the elections is big enough to accommodate probably the tax and, uh, assessor and tax, uh, uh, commissioner. And, uh, and then there's another building in the back that can be used, building tunnel, whatever. That's going to be something down the road, but you've got that building. It's, it's in a lot better shape than that building downtown.
I always want to see what we, what it's worth like it is and what it's going to cost to get it up.
Yeah.
And then you start realizing, okay, we go over and spend six, seven hundred thousand, you know, five hundred thousand, whatever. We've still got a building that was built, what, sixties?
Right.
What is it? Sixties?
Man, that all of the different.
Bit, bit. Okay. So that's what I'm saying. So I'm just, I'm just asking, you know, why not see what it's worth? And then let the finance and stat put the numbers together and, and go, hey, you know, I mean, sometimes it costs more to rent, make something than it does to go build. But when you start tearing out, redoing, it's like remodeling, sometimes up down projects, we'd have been better off if we'd have tore it down and just started.
It happens a lot. The, the people, uh, the, the issue with that building right now, uh, is that it was built, which you guys said fifty, sixties. Uh, it has a bunch of little internal offices. You can't change that. You can't change it without tearing the whole thing off. And so at the end of the day, if you put a lot of money into it, you still have a little offices here and there and it just don't function very well. Uh, and they don't, they don't, uh.
Wait, as you mentioned, little offices, see, I was thinking they just built one up in Sonoa Creek.
Absolutely.
They just spent a lot of money to build it. But as you know, that, uh, all the little offices.
Yeah.
Somebody owned that building, could turn it around and rent, rent each one of the little offices out for those small businesses. Well, this guy to have his little CPA business there and this guy to have a little business. And this big got wifi, it's downtown. You may have attorneys that might want to lease their office, lease the office that is in court all the time, gives them a place. I'm just saying, there's, there's options there.
Yeah. And right now, uh, uh, I, I guess what we'd have to do is gauge the market of what the drivel of, uh, market is for downtown breathing. I don't think it's a lot of it.
No.
Uh, that's, that's one of the issues. And if their portion was, uh, taking the building and having it renovated and taken down, they got that same issue we have.
Damn.
In terms of cost, maybe more costly than that, but certainly something we need to look at. And, 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 you know, realize that.
An investor builder, he go there and looks at it, he's doing it all himself.
Yeah.
We got pains that want to go do it all, you know, so all the, every, everyone involved has to make that money. Someone like that can do it all himself or oversee it himself. He's looking at the potential, what he can put into it and then make out of it. That run, you know, it's just, it's a whole other ballgame for this.
It's wrong. You, you've lived a goddamn agreement close to, uh, I know there's been some investors down there that dug springs with the buildings, but I don't think it's done as well as they hoped it would. Am I right, Mike? But.
Most of the buildings are privately owned. There are, but they're not definitely buildings. And they're just sitting there. I mean, and to try to get the people that own the buildings to sell them is like.
Hmm. We do this. That revitalization.
But again, I've, I've been involved. Then you still have those groups. You get an appraised.
Yeah.
That need to ten thirty once a month.
Right.
They're not going to give the devil what they pray, obviously, but if they pray for a certain amount, but we can take that and work with. There's folks that will buy it and sit there just to ten thirty one and commercial broadly and worry about the future. So we.
Well, so one, this building, the DFAX building here is almost finished, right? Or isn't it finished?
It's finished.
Finished.
It's finished.
So that, that's fifteen dollars worth of these. We talked about that before. We have an old finished remodelled space and would take very, very little in our scheme, fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, remodel.
I mean, why can't we just go ahead and move tax tags, owning elections and do, and, and then we if it buys us a little time to be able to figure out the best plan of how to address those buildings, do we sell them, do we rebuild them, do we do? For very minimal costs, it's money to understand.
Yeah.
It even have the pathways. I don't know. One building in the back is a lot of work needs to be done. We need to freshen it up.
It's on top of that. It's so far away.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. But the front of it is, you know, it's only moving there right now. You know, there's some other places that you can get. But to me, this building here, start moving.
Yeah. I do have a question. The only thing I didn't hear mentioned is where are we putting DFAX? Because that isn't a part of the county and I did not hear moving them anywhere.
You could, I mean, what I'd like to suggest with that is to look at possibility. DFAX could go here, it's small. I know we talked about sheriff, but I, you know, I get, I, I hadn't really been able you know, pitying that where they definitely wouldn't be. That's more conversation.
How much space do they keep?
Uh, this building, what you talk about, the DFAX, you share it.
DFAX.
Today, they've been in here and one time they had a lot of operation.
Oh, well.
But I never seen a value up there.
See, and that's the thing now, they've.
Wasn't helped.
It's a recent built DFAX and then the GBI.
Right.
Back of that.
We just have to provide space, right?
Mm hmm.
This is three relationships over the years, so they can go into the family building.
Yeah, I've heard DFAX.
DFAX. It's one of why we moved the other ones to here, sheriff to here. And we.
And see, I think if you're gonna, uh, I, I think if you're gonna go and happen, uh, rework in that building, the tax building, uh, called, it's called that, Dale, and I think moving them would be an option. If you're not going to do anything with that building, if the cost is, I might go ahead and determine where you want to put them. Do the renovations over there and then move them.
Well, that's more or less what I was suggesting. Yeah. This is going to call. That's not where it's going to be.
Yes, that's right.
We got a nice new building, but, but, you know, pretty, pretty new building, been remodeled here. Yeah. What's it cost to set it up for those people? It's get them in, it's cheaper to re, redoing that building.
Yeah.
We can sit back, take a breath, spend money on other projects and figure out what we want to do there. What does it cost? It's just, you know.
What are the things that are also the mechanics here is y'all's office. What I say they are talking about. You guys personnel, uh, five ants at all, continue to grow as well. Uh, there was a time that we had a lot of room. I mean, for a long time, we should be in Beverly, including the ones, uh, he had two, two people, I think, in five ants and that was about it. Uh, but that's, that's changed.
And that's Jane and Belinda.
That was a lot. So.
But I do, you know, at one point, and I can't remember if it was last year or the year before, that we talked about this particular setup for elections also for this building, wouldn't have to have anything done for early vote pick or whatever. She could utilize this room. So we're going to have to, if we do move up to DFAX, we're going to have to do a boardroom for us. So that was.
It will be turned to the system, finally prepared to three month and then we elevate it up just like this, but
also consider what you have in place too. And you can move multiple people in this building.
If, if you look at a, a meeting room, likely at what we may want to talk about inside, this would be some, it's for you guys, which they want to talk about, uh, having that meeting room where it has its own exterior door. Where if you had, for example, leagues that people would use at night or, or, uh, said it has leagues, you could open that door and open that meeting room without having to open the rest of your offices too. Uh, I mean, that's another option that, that, that was tried with. That way even if the public need to use something more red, they don't have access to the rest of it. But that's.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. So what it puts a duty to do is we need to try to, uh, get that and share on what they do. You know, I think when we finish these, the work we got up there, it served well as a jake. It arguably needs to administrate offices. So
This is perfect because it's close.
Right. And, and there have been a couple, like, we had actually spoken to the sheriff's office at one point about DFAX, um, putting a permanent wall up halfway in the back and giving them half access to the building and then us half access. Cause there's like thirty offices up there and they didn't want that. So then we offered pathways to them and they didn't want to share a building with that either. So it's, we've got to come up with a way, but I do agree with Adam, whatever we're going to do, we've got vacant buildings sitting there now that we need to figure out because the longer they sit, the more we're going to find something wrong or something's going to happen. So we need to move pretty quick to get on taking care of it.
The thing with elections, it's the biggest thing with Patty's office is they have to have a substantial area to keep all those machines plugged, your monitors secured. With all these things, and that takes more, obviously takes more space than, uh, uh, than they need for office space. And you got to have more than the view and all of these things. So it's, uh, you know, it's, it's a huge requirement right now with the state that's imposed on us.
I think we need to know what the requirement is. How many square footages does that require? What kind of security measures that happens to be in place and then we can quote that. And then that tells us exactly what we've got to spend up there. And it's spaces that you open for us or somewhere else.
Yeah, we got a quote note, uh, back a while back, and I think, I, I think you should say like five, maybe. I didn't look at it. We felt like that's, yeah. It was a little high.
Just set up.
But that's.
Have a lot of work.
You know, that's the other half.
Five, five twenty five. It's five, yeah, five twenty five.
We're flowing. I know that calling now one more.
That's, that was, yeah.
Nobody is.
Yeah. Well, they, uh, it, it, it's, they support some of the panels and the windows. Uh, but.
No, no, the pathways, pathways building. Yeah, just the pathways building.
No, we, this is, this is all a little slight walkie.
And that, that's why I was thinking that's an option. You could open a room for a boardroom. We can secure exterior, get an extra walls for security. Cheaper than we can redo any pathway.
Yeah.
Cheaper than we can redo on the square. Uh, we can come a square as soon as we need. IDA can go ahead and leave here and go to pathway. You know, it's up, there's four offices.
Well, if you open up, uh, Patty's office, open up that, uh, patio, move it up somewhere else. That order, that'll panel off IDA.
I think that's perfect. But I was being short term, we need office. You guys go over there and say, it's all. Yeah, I like that idea of an idea up on the square and then they could kind of showcase something.
Hmm. All of those guys, we, we're not going to be able to do all this this year, but what we do need to do is like, wait, I know. It's just impossible, but.
I thought we were laying out what we're doing.
No, we're not. We're not. But we're going to lay out, we're going to lay out, but you need to know where to go and we just have that. And, uh, and then we got to start soon. Soon as we start, the quicker we get to the end of the program. And I don't know when y'all see this, but on the fastest route, let's take with this. Mark, we, y'all didn't see it. It's such a full of breath. See. I don't know y'all see.
You're ready to.
Yeah.
Mm hmm. We have, we have options. There's a two million option, an eight million option, a ten million option in there.
That much? No. Going forward. More than five is on the right. Yeah, we have a building there now that's occupied by the public defenders. And, uh, we're, we're required to get, we're required to contribute to the, the helping space of public defender. End of the action, we pay both sides of the, of dealing with that. So, uh, but yeah, this occupied option. It is kind of basically.
Oh. So we did have another option under, um, staff allocation, but we've talked about it almost as, as much as we have option one. So I won't go over option two right now. Um, just to mention that, uh, tax commissioner's building, we've talked about exterior has extreme water damage. Interior needs to be refreshed and, and renovated. But the other facility that we haven't really talked about is Lake Meriwether. We have said several times in several meetings that Lake Meriwether is a jewel in the county. And one of the things that we would really like to propose are incremental improvements so that we can continue to use and take advantage of Lake Meriwether. Projects include the baseball field improvements for the recreation department, uh, more spaces for camp sites, pull through RV sites and other amenities out there to, um, to bring in revenue and bring in visitors and, and let people enjoy the, the lake itself.
Baseball.
Uh, baseball field improvements, um, more spaces for camping sites, pull through RVs and then any other camping amenities that, that they would need out there. Now, before we go too much further into the other projects, John has some information on, um, the Sfloss and T Sfloss commitments. So John, do you want to talk about that just?
Start setting. You was talking about waiting there.
Yes, sir.
I remember sometime this past year, we had a meeting sometime talking about a wall down.
I must say.
Well, like, like, like not.
Oh, yeah.
Do that now.
They, they, oh, yeah, they, yeah, we talked about that. It was. Soon. Yeah. It is ridiculous.
Yeah. Some people that work with, uh, I guess. Some people that work with, uh, I guess with fire building regulations. They live in a fantasy world, they, they, they live in what I call theory. They live in theory of how it ought to be, but they never had to be responsible for the building to make for that. They pull up the stuff that you. They think it's a good idea.
I had not heard that it went away, so I wanted to where we're gonna get that done.
We did pave, uh, the, the road there over Lake Maryweather, which, which helped a lot. So we had. One of the things that, that called probably the dam, it was water intrusion, we had a lot of that, the crack tunnel, we got we cracked the asphalt. We rip it to that dam. But that dam for the age is probably in as good a shape as the dam I'm in.
It's in damn good shape.
This building, uh, what, sixty years?
And we never, damn, doing those dedications that have been going on.
Yeah, we, we got your dedications, we already got one up and I, I told them, build the little, uh. Building for the, for the others, the little, the, the covering. And, uh, we need to do that, we need to go ahead and get that taken care of. We got one of the fire department too. This works. These were some things we did have out of submission, which is just. And I know you worked on that, but we gotta get it.
No, sir, not yet.
We need to go ahead and get it.
We just need to get the structure built and that's, that, that's really the main thing is getting the structure built.
Yeah, it is just a small, small structure. And, uh, can we, let's, let's make that.
John, you want to give us a little bit of an update? Cause you know, we've thrown around a lot of numbers about what money we have and what needs to be spent. But John can give us an update on what he has or what we have and, uh.
Did you have a cost related to Maryweather?
No, sir.
Well, last year, we made that, well, that last, we did, uh, some expanded, uh, camp sites for RVs. It was just more electric, we just got a new house, worth a whole lot of money. Uh, but we did have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant. That we used to put in a, uh, uh, you know. Boat rent, which we have a lot of complaints about. We, we made an ADA accessible platform in the lake with that. We built a nature trail with that, volunteering. And we made ADA parking ADA trail, uh, and, uh, and walking trail already. So that was all we're gonna put together.
Yeah, go ahead.
Our funding sources, if you look on the bank's balance, that's gonna be for the next meeting, the second page of the SLOSS and T SLOSS commitments. And it's breaking down, all the thing I don't have on the commitments on the SLOSS is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars and that's for the two chassis for fire department. So if you add that to it, your SLOSS balance now becomes negative almost three hundred and twenty-five thousand. And your grand total estimated to spend will drop to three point eight million. So it's. The house looks negative, but the, the mig, the five hundred thousand in there, we're not going to spend that until. Probably summertime, close to the fall. That's gonna be the very last end of the, the mig. The next payment for those projects will come out of general fund and then the balance will come out of SLOSS. So. And we're averaging one forty-seven right now. That's based off of twenty twenty-three's numbers. They've been going trending upward every month, so twenty twenty-three is a fair estimate to go off of.
So while, while we still have, well, we have a, basically we had our prediction, we have a decade of battles down. We'll go quickly overcoat that and have a positive balance without any commitment until that.
Correct, yes. Cause with the five hundred thousand, I mean, you, you've got one seventy-five. So five hundred thousand, I don't anticipate spending until prior round of August. And you get a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a month. So you're gonna be back in, do the positive very quickly. Um, your T SLOSS, right now, we can commit this, only one I know of is Buell and Heaven's Road and that's the only thing I can find in minutes. That leaves us with one point, almost one point two million dollars to spend in T SLOSS right now in the bank, ready to go. You said, maybe we can buy.
We're, we're continuously regravel roads and that's, uh, super, that's not cheating. But, but I tell you, the last few rates and then we have had. Continue that process.
Man, I did the same thing, use twenty twenty-three as average, one twenty-three. Gives us a total of three point one T SLOSS remaining, I'm gonna claim my, I'm gonna say it's gonna say it's done. Um, like you said, other source, you got general funds. I did get confirmation from auditors that our general fund. Is unrestricted, it can be allocated for anything with the board's approval when they decide to do the fund balance. The good news is on that one, we have almost ten million dollars that can be allocated to vehicles. Building renovations, the auditors didn't see any issues with that. Arper money, the three point five million that we have in the bank, that's general fund loss revenue now.
And that's in the, almost ten.
That's, that's in the ten million, that's part of it because he, he actually told me that too, he's like, I believe about some arper money, that's three point eight, but it's not three point five, but that's what's in the bank right now.
Well, we have a deadline on that arper where it has to be.
It was already allocated out last year, the general fund and loss revenue.
It's all. They had a specific that you had to put the projects out.
To you.
Yeah, they constantly change the wording of that as you know, through it. So we got to avoid just to have to let a project out, we, we counted it as if, uh, it were expensive, we aren't a current. Like to bring it back in, is that right?
Treasury rules stimulating you to the end of this year to allocate all your funds unless you use it as loss revenue in the general fund. That's the way the auditors. Reclassified it in twenty-two. That allocates it all, everything should be, we're fine on that end, it just needs to be, our account needs to be closed, the money needs to be transferred to the general.
I do think we need to.
Never done that yet, sorry?
My thought on that is this is money that came down from federal government to the citizens of Maryweather County. We need to do something very special that will last over the years for them instead of putting a general fund and losing. That's how I feel that would be done. I think it'll be lost in a general fund, uh, account. And just go out and really won't even know what we did with it to determine it. So I do think that the original. Part of the arper where we need to dedicate it, I do think we need to dedicate that amount of funds instead of just putting it in general fund and losing it.
What, what type of project do you think? Water, across, yeah, the land, um.
Coming out from the cities to the rural areas as much as we possibly can just to help them with it. Something like that trash service throughout the county, something that they'll benefit with over the years instead of just losing it in the general fund. Right.
Considering the treasure rule was to use it to prevent spread of diseases.
But if we put it in there, then I do think we'll lose it over a period of time just spending it.
Using old roads, thing I did when.
Listen, roads are gonna be there for me and you and Dad. So. It's gonna benefit the taxpayers.
It's general fund money. They're, they're gonna make, make the entry and move it to the general fund. And we can also, we can classify a line in there to keep track of it. On whether it's spent on, there's nothing to add a new account to the ledger.
No, I know we can move it and that's not an issue. I'm, I'm worried that it's gonna get lost in that general fund though with.
We, we, we can track it with a lot. And look back later and go, where did it go?
Yeah, look, ten years to make it quick. Think of projects, cause I know we've talked about the water, talked about, uh, the, the collection to gardens. That's something that everybody's benefited from, certainly eventually, and then, uh.
The way I look is we have an aging population in this county and a lot of them on fixed income. So if there's something we can do to help benefit those individuals, that's what I really want to put it out there to try to do. Something we can all come up with that will benefit those people.
That's not another new funding source. So we, we getting great interest rates now right now, right?
About one half of the other phone has.
So we're generating about how much a month off of this money we got in the?
There's, I just moved two millions and eight million in the investment pool right now. Uh, you won't see the full four and a half on that until probably February. Right now it's averaging about twenty-two, twenty-two thousand, one thousand six. And if everything, I probably want to move another million. After we can pay, after we go on the payables this week, um, so to be ten million dollars.
It'll be thirty, thirty-one thousand dollars a month.
How much are we spending gravel?
Uh, it's not thirty-two a mile. Thirty-seven a mile.
Five minutes I paid, it'd been a hundred, but you. Ten to thirty thousand, ten hundred dollars.
Yeah, I was trying to stick out if we couldn't take the interest and just put gravel out of it.
That's where I'll go. Really, here's some money, smart, your job, invest in free taxpayer. Taxpayer, put it to good use so that we can get some things done where you're. Payed on all of it, neither.
That's what I'm saying, take advantage of a while that's wrong with right there, get some things done before we wouldn't do. I, for some reason, I was thinking with sixty or ninety.
Well, it's, you got SLOSS, T SLOSS, in the general fund, all three of those are.
It, I would be careful with like T SLOSS and SLOSS. That's where I'm carefully, not booting those, of course, you could use it for gravel too, you can do all that. But I would be careful if they booted that maybe to a category that might, that might per se. Just case.
But they, but the interest money from the T SLOSS and SLOSS. Shouldn't be treated the same as the T SLOSS and SLOSS money.
Correct, and it had to be.
As be, that's.
Loss interest, yes, the T SLOSS investment.
But you have so much, much to still do.
Right.
But there's a huge amount of money to keep your gravel on, paying another mile road and then here with the interest money, this is coming up.
Well, even if it increases that flow, they'll have in that T SLOSS and SLOSS.
T SLOSS had about two point six million, this gave me, I think about ten thousand dollars a month. So, one point five of that Buell and Evans, I plan on keeping most of it until that project starts to gain that interest. So that'll pay for a truckload of gravel once a month. So just those smart investments like that, you can bring out interest and move it. That's why you see on the ledger, eight, eight thousand dollars, but it's two point six in the bank. I want as much in there that we can gain interest out of it. And it is, I need to bring the money down, I can bring it down a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand dollars. If the allocation you get every month, there's a meatball we need to play out. But the more I keep in there, the more favorable it is to the county that we're gaining interest out of it, that'll help offset some of the taxpayer revenue. Like T SLOSS, you use gravel, SLOSS, help with building renovations. General fund, you gotta be kind of careful with because it's a balanced budget. Instead of going and buying more gravel, gravel, it's not supposed to be, it's about the minimum budget and a lot more restrictions. Has to be balanced.
Right.
Um, and, and one final note before we move on to the next, uh, set of projects. The reason that we're having to spend all this money on repair and fixing stuff is because we haven't really focused on preventative maintenance. We've got to make sure that we have, uh, a, a line having, um, with, that, that, that takes care of the preventive maintenance. Both on the supply side and on the personnel side. So. We just need to make sure that we are charging that each one of the budgets and that we're following up to make sure that. Public works and facilities are appropriately staffed because Lee, bless his heart, spends. You know, several hours a day up at the jail when the jail truly should have their own maintenance person that, that. And that.
It's funded, so.
So we just need to make.
Keeps sending the cannon one up there while these builders degrade and they're gonna spend this money.
That, yes, sir, that could be said, but if we, but if we can, can focus on the staffing and getting the, the right people in the right places, that will. That will save us, that will, that would have saved us a lot of this money over the last ten years if we had had it. But all we can do is, is try to make tomorrow better. Um, going on to, uh, recreation projects. Um, one of our current recreation projects that we've got right now is the Greenville passive park. Uh, this project is partially grant funded by the land and water conservation grant. It is a, a federal pass through grant that comes from, from, from D N R. Um, we're getting four hundred thousand from the grant, but the. Oh, two hundred thousand, oh, my apologies. Um, yeah, right? I thought it was four hundred. Um, and we are still working through the cost because the, everything has jumped so much in price. We have had a little bit higher price on the park than we are wanting to do. But we're looking at that now to be able to cut it down. But finishing that part and getting public works to start on it is. The number one recreation project right now. Uh, second one behind the passive park is probably the ball fields at Lake Maryweather.
But one of the reasons for the emergency all that park is here is that, well, I think we've got to finish that or get it substantially done by the end of the. And what we're gonna do with it is we're gonna do, uh, some in kind work that count toward that. And that in kind work, grading, clearing, various other things. Uh, then we'll need to get someone in to do the final grade, final grading, so it'll have a pavilion, bathroom, et cetera. Uh, we did get a cost estimate, this is our original cost estimate, so this were about three years ago, probably better than Allison. Cause we, we've been working on this, but we didn't, we didn't get the first time around, but they didn't give it to us, so. It takes a long time. We do have a new updated, uh, price list, uh, that I, I've been, we're gonna go back through, we're gonna cut some of the costs. And they have to cut some of the bids, sir. We'll do what we need to do when it's been developed and brings it forward.
You basically give other works out. So we're fixing to pull a short staff public works off of these roads that we're working on to send to this park. That we got a quote on the contract and we can do the work for us.
We, so because we're in the winter time, not everybody's working on the roads and it won't be a full crew, it would be. A dozer and a couple of, couple of heavy machine operators, it wouldn't be a full, the full crew of public works up there doing it, it would just.
And what they'll spend some folks all out there just like taking the shop projects, stay there. What they do, we see is they would go out there and work all days and they can't work on the road, they pull off, work on the roads, come back and they can't work on. It's bad. That's, I mean, that's what they can do. Yeah, again, we're not talking about a whole lot of work that, that they can, a lot of shit they can do now.
Yeah.
Give my agents in there, so we are gonna. I can't see many road days, they cannot work on roads that they could be able to work on grading a park. Well, rain, so you can't grade, they're really gonna make a mess. Can't do a pothole. Getting in there, how are they gonna go and grade in the rains?
I, 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 I would, I would say all of it should be regraded, given all of it's rough graded, it should be, they best, you fix it back and you go with your.
I'll tell you what, a gentleman told me one stuff, he said, nobody like to get a pin on, but, uh, in their county. When it's raining, maybe not downpour, I understand that, but when it's raining and so forth. They had to put the raincoats on and they had shelves with about six foot handle on, well, to it, you know. And their job was to go around while it's raining and get, and clean the pipes out and unstop it. And keep that water flowing instead of just hanging out at the shop or go, it's a rainy day, too much we can do today and getting paid. And then our problems will lose, they should be out there. Yeah. Man soup roads and watching what the water's doing. I didn't even realize over here by my house, the road I was there going, hey, I've been there six years, I've always seen the water back up. And then finally the neighbors stopped me and I looked at it and there's not even a cul de plaine under the roof. At all, I said, no, with the, but it's, there's no pipe at all. It builds up like a lake and it has to flow over the road until it recedes. And then it has to sit out there on the side like a pond until it just go down. There's never been a pipe on there.
But, but they, we do, uh, they are, they're, we don't just let them sit around, they, they have things to do, they've made them some of the. Ready days, they do much stuff that, uh, they used to do, but, uh.
By them doing this work is offsetting.
Well, our original estimate on that was, uh, about four hundred.
That's where that came from.
Four hundred, four fifty thousand dollars was our original estimate of that we were gonna do in kind work there. Uh, when, uh, um, we've spent some money on the engineering already. We have, we have all the life and studies and all the things there. So now we're down to avoid the, the bills and, uh. It, uh, it's gonna be costly if we go out and just contract whole thing to be done. Uh, it'd be a lot less, um, you know, uh. Costly, we can do the rough grading, we also got some rough grading we need to do on that road we talked about, those are the industrial part there. Those are a couple of projects that we gotta, that we've gotta work on. It doesn't take all your crews, but it's gonna take a couple, couple guys out there to do.
And we've got obstruction removal at the airport as well at the end of the runway that we really need them to clear. So there's, there's, there's several clearing projects that we've got for them to do.
County's responsible for that? Airport already.
I, I, I'd like to be with that project, I'll check over and see. Generally what they do is they get money from federal government state, that's all for the contract construction.
I say, so a lot of the, for county resources do that, my only source that, yeah.
I, I don't, I'd like to be with that project, we'll check over and see. And they have funded value to invite you to be able to.
Hey, that's the national. I agree, I go to get it done, say, I mean, they are.
Okay, um, our administrative staff. Among our administrative staff, we have several current projects, projects. Uh, we discussed staffing and retention last time. Um, the next priority project is the T splosh referendum that will be coming up uh in November. Uh, we're gonna need to work on the the documents and the ballot and the intergovernmental agreements uh with the cities. Um, once that about. Yeah. Mm hmm, okay, all right. Um, following the T splosh, but we'll also have a splosh initiative in twenty twenty five, so that'll be something to keep, keep in mind. Um, another of the continuing projects are the addition and updates to county ordinances. Uh, some of the topics we need to add are um landlord surrenders for animal control. Uh, a utility right of way permitting process. Um, and then the expansion of our commercial zoning classifications. Basically, we we don't have, we've only got, I believe, one zoning, commercial zoning classification. And we'd like to expand it so we have a little bit of a a room to have some variety. The other remaining priority is the creation and implementation of a vehicle replacement program. Not just for public safety, but also for our other county fleets and county vehicles that we need. Um, we've got a couple of different ways that we can do that. We've got the the splost fundings that we can do. And then. We can do it one of two ways. We can contract a fleet service via an R F P to to to. Purchase them, lease them or purchase them. We will use them and then when we are finished with them, they will sell them to recapture as much of the value as possible. Uh, the second procedure is just internal procurement where we develop specifications and source of vehicles on a set schedule. From multiple sources. So for example, maybe one year we do one ambulance every year. And then maybe uh two public works trucks every year and then we're able to start replacing and updating the fleet. Um, staff recommends establishing a schedule that'll assist us in budgeting and procurement. Um, we can use it from a variety of sources, but mainly it's gonna be splost. If it's any public works equipment, it could come from T splost. Um, but we also have a capital outlay account in the general fund that can be carried over year by year if it's not used and if it's reported. So that kind of gives an incentive to our department heads if they can save money, to save money. Because they know that they will have it available as a capital outlay in the next year. John, is there anything else that you want to add about that?
Where the capital outlays is based off of, what we have in capital outlay county by, taking into one a hundred thousand dollars. We can carry it over to next year, carry our fund balance. And then you have three hundred thousand, now you got four hundred. So if you continue to carry it over and all be recorded as a carryover, is available there to spend. It just has to be recorded right under gas being gap regulations for us. It has been a capital outlay, okay, just get away, because you have a million dollars in salary. Thirty million dollars, we just carry it on, strictly wanted to be capital.
So what I have handed you right now is just a sheet that just has just kind of a recap of of some of the items. Some of the amounts and some of the funds that they could come from. Um, the facilities list, of course, is longer than the one that we discussed here because I wanted to have a little bit fuller list. And then um. It does have the May date for the T splost referendum, but it would be uh November.
Then the vehicle replacement program, how soon do you anticipate having to do that with the recent improvement that we just made? But also specifically for ambulance. And we just approved.
Yeah.
Basically, two more. Um, possibly three, but some more we can do with a little bit over there.
So you go back and look at your fleet. Okay, that's critical. Uh, you got good fleet, you may not need a couple of decks. Leave his own department, indeed in terms of, let's just say you have ten vehicles. And uh the vehicles are good for a period of five years, doesn't get to a fourth or a fifth or a half. What you do is you go and just start a a two year, two vehicle year replacement probably because they could uh. Take care of it since over a five year period. So what you do is you take your vehicles that are least reliable or the most violent or whatever, and you just replace two of them. And then, of course, nothing to do with those things, that doesn't mean that you replace them. Uh, they don't have some good, so public works can use a lot of uh trucks and things of that nature. That you might not want to put out here for the first lot of sheriff's level, for example. But it could be a vehicle you use for maintenance and and. Yeah, absolutely, so.
We have not done that analysis to know what what kind of town.
We we've talked about it, we hadn't really done a fleet analysis unless these guys have. But I think what you have to do, you have to go back every department that has a fleet. And you have to develop it based on what your fleet just does.
And today we don't know.
That's why we believe this. But it is something we didn't even work for.
Oh, yeah, but I just wondered how urgent that was, considering we've got these. And where does that put us in that lifecycle of replacement? Is it something we need to start saving towards for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty seven or we need it next year?
It's it's something that we should definitely start saving towards uh for the immediate need. I think we've addressed most of the immediate gotta be fixed things now. We do have a couple of of two thousand and three trucks that are in public works that we we want to roll down or push down to the next. Um, to the next uh. Roll the next truck down and 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 get those those folks a newer, a newer vehicle to ride around in.
And I've got, I've got some other options that soon as I can, that could tierize out, I'll talk to you guys about the base crock options that. You know, I've talked to sheriff's office about, right, who lies. You know, my thoughts would be that what you probably need to do, the thing that's good for this year. But I think when we move into the twenty twenty four budget and stuff, I think uh at that period in time, I think the departments need to start. Looking at what is.
I plan on having to have them do a five year capital.
Has three. To see those, I mean, let's say you get five year out of, you're not gonna need more than every year, every so long.
Every other year.
And if public works, if that's a need, so the sheriff.
One thing I see a lot here is there are one, two, three, four, five, six different projects that have grant funds. But what grants are they? Do we think we'll get them? Do we know where?
So that that is there simply because it's available for those. Um, the Lake Maryweather grants, those will be a little bit easier to get. Port House renovation.
Probably need to know what. What funding source.
Oh, okay, so, okay, so, so this.
Wide for these, are we going?
No, no, sir. Well, we can if if commission uh commission wants to sue. Port House renovation is gonna be um historic preservation. Uh, grants, county jail is probably gonna be U S uh rural development, taxes planning and zoning.
This this charter, really named charter, is part of our short term work program. That's included in the in the top plan. It has to be updated every four or five years. And these are just things that we're looking at. This is from something that already existed. That that we're we're talking about needing to try to do at some point. And uh we estimate for years here, we try to do it in the end. It just gives you a little bit of a a long term game plan. But in addition to this, you gotta deal with what's more important, what's your short term, where you get them. Some of these things will wait for the for that, you gotta do that.
Yeah.
So that's really, I think, just.
Sorry, but to his point, if there are grant funds available, we should be going after them immediately.
Right, yes.
But we're looking at those as a funding.
Someone said, our project was, you know, rural revitalization, downtown revitalization, rats. Or maybe even tax tags on in building, you know, downtown revitalization.
Yeah, possibly.
A hundred thousand dollars. Even though it's a counted building, but you know.
We paid the back parking lot of that building, because it was dirt. We paid that with a uh U S D acre, and it's about seventy five thousand dollars.
When I spoke to Senator Also himself, he said that there are a lot of grants coming up this year through his office. So it's.
We're talking. Mm hmm, we're talking with him and and we'll, we keep an eye out for for incoming grants and, you know, anything that applies and anything that fits.
Yeah.
I mean, if you.
The the key with a grant is to use the grant for something you were gonna do. Some people go out and get a grant because they can get it for you. You did that build something that hasn't thought about, not staff, I've got a supply. So do what you. We get great response, that's why. Something you know what you wish it had.
Mm hmm, yes, sir. One of the things that I will call, that, I mean, that that's, that is a big part of my job, that's.
Majority of the things should be against. Like a fire company did when you get one of those.
That that was in the congressionally directed spending. But it wasn't, it wasn't, yeah, it didn't.
You got two things. One was supposed to be a fire truck plan and I think they're like, it was working, they applied all to them and I think they had some tail running. With me with that, but.
Also, in a new program this year was the ability right for us to double the M I G grant.
That is a uh, that's a something that the government is making, he wants to do. And uh, I don't know whether the legislators will support that or not, I hope they do.
I thought it came from the federal government to the states for us to apply for.
They have to give them a lead, so it's, they can discuss the bottom, fuel tax sales. And uh, and so there may be some federal grants, but I know with the recent. Yeah, he wanted to look at uh, he's asking for substantially increased like eight hundred million dollars or something in in uh a B. And what the state will do that is they will go out and they will reallocate that. If they get that, based upon the property that you use. Now, sometimes you go in, as I mentioned earlier, you got another five hundred, forty five thousand. Little bit, I call this dollar floating around of that, but uh, uh. Yeah, if if that happens, and I hope it does, uh, it'll it'll help us a lot.
And there is a twenty twenty five federal study grant that we have coming from the feds for um Phil Callford's been working on. So that's for the signage and the striping and like federal safety stuff.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if that passes, we'll we'll certainly get it allowed. Chair.
Well, just, you know, like you were saying earlier, one thing we're blessed with is having plenty of products to do. Plenty of great opportunities for the products we're doing and in your words, things we're gonna need to do or should be doing anyway. We have an active plan pursuing the grants, but there's a ton of projects here that if we had the grants and funds that we'd need to be doing right now. We might kick all that noise, so we should be pursuing every opportunity and getting them.
Yeah.
Because that's the only thing holding us back when things that are needed to be done are funded.
Yeah, and and I don't, I mean, I, you know, there there are grants out there, uh, there are just so uncertain sometimes. Uh, and sometimes it takes so long, like this red red up here we're talking about, we worked on that for three or four years. And uh, and one that we held up, it just took that long to get it through. Literally, we've been working on a grant that might be able to be used for this industrial park road making. By observing what it is, we're gonna have to have that road open long before that grant's ever gonna be utilized. You know, so I agree, we need to search and see what all is out there. But uh, but you also need to have those, as you said earlier, like a boats, what you get. Really can't get out or get those. Uh, but if you do get them, that's just, you'll will raise the board.
But in a time like this, we mentioned earlier last year, my grants and grant writing, there are agencies, companies, we can hire and do the full races. And if we didn't like do that, it could be extensive, but that's the only way you went after grants. And in a time like this, we have so much that needs to be done, would it be in our interest to hire someone? For a short period of time to go after certain grants and get movement on there?
I think it 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 is. Yeah, I'll tell you what. Uh, I've written lots of work, it is tough to see, it takes a lot. And if you, and if you know what you're doing, you cut a tad of half. There are a couple of companies in the state of Georgia, in particular, I worked with a lot. It's Alex Smith, uh, consultant. They are known statewide, they are great. Uh, Denver has had a grant that we did, it lives through them, and we didn't have that for a. A posse, Denver invented people. And in certain, we talked to her what type you're a few years ago. Probably would be worth a conversation for her to just see what's happening. And uh, the small ones, we could go in and house, if you got a big rent, and you have to go ahead and prepare that rate. But if you get that rate, you can pay them out of the rent which means to manage that rate.
That's correct.
And we talked earlier about, we called it our work, just asking, you know, make it Davis, Saturday, right? See, somebody, you gotta go out, if you have a federal rate, you gotta go out and survey the workers. Be sure they're paid that meets with federal guidelines. It's a lot of work that goes to the business, and that's where Allen Smith would come in this.
If that particular firm doesn't like to bite the grain, unless they doesn't go get it.
That's why.
So what what do we need to do to move forward on pursuing that? Does the owner need to do anything or does some of you guys say, hey?
Well, if you got it, just just give us direction, say, hey, we'd like to do this, I'll call Denver Smith and get heard of it. All right, I I I'm just taking it for the system.
I will make most of the vote, I mean, you take, you're blessed.
All right, I will contact Denver Smith, uh. If she lives way over the other side of Athens, so it may be about to settle, so you can call her something like that. But I may ask if she's gonna be in this area, but she's something that we listen to. And uh, I'll call her and see if we can get her in and talk to you guys.
Don't forget on the notes that I'm already to uh reach out to D O T for a line out.
Yes.
You got a lot of flights.
We do, we, yeah, we do. I will, we will appeal that.
Oh, I know one thing I was talking about, we're having a session today. I went over there the morning, met with the fire chief, Andy Garrett. Custom body. We met early at eight o'clock on the ten degree morning. Two hours in the ambulance, it was in that cold weather. And I noticed, I know they're secondary, they're not, they got ones in the fire stations inside park. But there's four sitting out there that are usable to where if they had to have them, they got a call, they gotta go.
Yeah.
And I noticed all of them are just covered in big ice. I know they got, they had them all plugged in for the diesel engines, crank and so forth. But if all of a sudden there was any kind of a crisis, emergency, we need to hit the road. They'd have to either try to take some time to D I, scrape it, get it off. And I just candidly asked, I said, why uh, why don't we got sister in some kind of coast? And uh, Sandy said he's been wishing for that for years. I've never heard anything about it, you know, we, but anyhow, they got, they got the holes racing behind the fire that they have. It wouldn't take much to set the poles and just have just a metal top, not a big building, not a big expense. But have them just uh get a quilt to put a top, like a pole barn, put in the parking. They would keep it out of sun, that keep it out of the weather, that keep it out, bronc would be on it. Uh, if they had to use it, uh, if they had to run out there when a pouring down rain, you know, to get in trouble and get rolled, they're not standing out in the rains. And if I looked at it, it was not attached to the building, but it would lay just right there next to exist. That's the oldest fire, that's the fire station they built me in the eighties. Uh, so anyhow, I didn't know. So that's awesome. So I didn't know where I'm supposed to mention that at where, you know.
We'll, we'll take it, okay.
Yeah, so if we can put that on agenda, they said they love to have that, they got the poles, I would think five thousand or eleven, could grab it up.
Yeah, I I don't.
Fire station, Bronson, Bronson, they got what, two or three trucks?
Well, I mean, that's a thought, if there, if there's, if that location they can be.
If they are the, you know, the back of me, I think that would be bad.
Yeah, and I think that'll make some old seats. You can pull three, four, three back.
Yeah, this would be bad.
I think the others. But they went on me, I just, I just wonder why they're sitting out.
One and two, Brody stood base, I think it ain't got to be. One man told Brody, he stood by, I think it ain't got two vehicles.
Right. Yeah.
But what that meant is.
Well, they need to be moving around and doing.
I'll check with that because also if you get about a couple of people, sometimes they use to be one of the, uh, spread. Uh, I'll check with you that.
Limit if we put one down there, they probably want you driving to get the back of the metal.
He gave the dollar.
That was one of my notes I forgot to mention. I drive it. I get far sick.
You do.
Yeah. You gotta drive like that. You're driving, don't get sick. You ain't driving, get sick. Or if you're sitting in the back, you get sick. If you're sitting in front, you don't get sick.
I'm always like, I don't know.
Um, if we cover everyone?
Yes, sir.
That'd be nice to have a few next, uh.
Sure.
Yes, yes.
I, I've locked. Just try to rewrap it a little bit. Uh, it's actually wrong.
Keep that.
All right. Okay. We, we talked about a lot of leagues today. My league, one of our biggest issues is going to be buildings. We'll just wrap it up. We want to get you guys on the part of here. Uh, we talked about a lot of leagues today and, uh, with buildings and various stuff, uh, I think at this stage, I think we got some pretty good feedbacks. What I recommend is we have staff kind of put together maybe some options that bring us back very soon of various what we want to do with buildings. And, uh, we'll look at how we need to go about doing that. I think that's one of our biggest, uh, leagues we got to do. We got some tab on T-SLOSS now. But we need to do that and then, uh.
A few options, I think is better.
Yes. Yes. Yes, it is. Yeah. And, uh, yeah, we will, we will come back a whole bunch and even that's really about the option. That's my good and for. We'll, we'll look at some options and see what may be needed first. We'll put some dollars for that. And then what I would like to do is, is also the, I want to start wrapping those things. Okay. Let's wrap them where if we don't get to them this year, we get to play working board. We know next year we start on five to eight to five, ten, whatever. So that would be important too. So what we'll try to do is then as I was suggesting, we'll do that by your, by our first meeting in, uh, February.
That much time is.
Five weeks.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, in two weeks.
Just like rank and order for our.
Yeah.
I know, I'm, I'm usually the ones that, why is it so slow? But I just. Yeah, it sounds like a lot of the.
See, this is, we, see, we've all gotten a lot of listeners.
Yeah.
And we've been going.
It looks like it. And I appreciate the time in.
Yeah. So we could, uh, we could do that. So. Well, I think that's all we have. Thank, uh, staff here for a good job they all did.
Hey, since we got a special guest here tonight, if I wanted to address them, like to do that there on my phone, let's get them out, that we can.
No, you can call what you can do.
Thank you.
And one of the. This may be the first zone here. The public authorities are docked, so they don't have options.
That's the nearest here.
Yes, sir.
I guess.
And they, and they only get like, uh, five minutes or so. Three minutes or if they got a spokesman, they're thinking they got fifteen. Then what we normally do is we call them the staff, we call them the advocate, we call them the, uh, person that's, uh, a people. Then we give the app, what more options?
Anthony, it's not too many here. Yeah. One, two, more on the street. My personal opinion, back in the days of like, I always felt like that they pay their taxes, they vote us, they put us in an office, they took time to be here tonight.
Yeah.
As long as they're not gonna drag it up to midnight for two, three hours, lounge.
There are those. Fifteen, sixteen, if they want to say the same thing. So.
Yeah.
You know, the same time it has been said in the past, if one person in your group can convey your message for the entire group, let that person speak. And it really does set down as you were.
Also, you say that is easy to have a league to add that has not yet.
I didn't say it, right. A lot of them back in media forums just walk up there and go, thank you, but they go, that's, that's good.
So.
Well, we didn't go in much, but yeah, we're, we're through here. We're all, we're under the ground, we're through here, break, break, and we'll get ready to.